January 27, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown, here. Hazen?
Here.
Percy?
Here.
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Woo?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. Next up is approval of minutes from previous meetings of January 13, 2020, and a joint meeting of the City Council and Town Board from the same date. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Is that moved by Jared? Seconded by Mary Alice. Are there any corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none. We'll move on to public input and presentations. I will briefly do public input. I have a card from Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood, representing the Dr. Ellis subdivision. She states they are continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. We also have Matt Deering in the audience. He represents the Stow Group, and he's available to answer questions. Or did you wish to make a statement?
No.
Okay. He's available to answer questions at the time that we discuss that on the agenda. Okay. We have a presentation tonight. We've invited representatives from the University of Illinois to make a presentation on the campus master plan. We thought this was a very timely presentation to hold. We're about to launch a rewrite of Urbana's comprehensive plan, and since much of the campus is in the city of Urbana, and we're planned to work probably more closely with the university than we have in the past when the previous comp plan was written. So, we thought this would be a great way to provide a framework for our discussion moving forward. And Carol, would you like to introduce our?
Sure. I'll introduce the folks who are kind enough to come tonight. We have on the left is Bob Fleider, who is the Director for Community and Government Relations for the camp- this campus. And then we have Ted Christie, who is the Associate Director for Project Planning. And then we have Matthew Tomaszewski, who is the Executive Associate Provost for Capital Planning. And I'll turn it over to Bob, I think, to start.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Carol. And honorable mayor and members of the council, we are honored to be here today to visit with you, to talk a little bit about planning. And this conversation, I believe, began primarily earlier in 2019, when Chancellor Jones had an opportunity to meet with some of our area municipal officials, including Mayor Marlin. Carol Mitten was there also. And Chancellor Jones mentioned and presented to them copies of our camper- Campus Master Plan, with the idea being that in the future, it would- he believes our futures are inextricably linked, and feels that it would be really important if, as we plan together, or as we, you know, plan together, we would evolve together in a way that, you know, truly makes our community much better. There were some questions that he had with regard to the way some of the planning had been done in the past. And so, we had made our presentation and talked about the importance of working together, and that led to a conversation about, or an invitation, I should say, by Urbana and Champaign, for Chancellor Jones to make a presentation to the developers forum in Champaign. So, that occurred in September, and it was, I think, one of those types of meetings where the chancellor had an opportunity to address the community in a way that maybe he otherwise would have not had an opportunity were not for your invitation and your involvement in that meeting. And he talked a little bit about the future of the university and some of the ideas that he had in mind. But I think the suggestion from the cities, primarily Carol, was that, you know, if one of the things you're interested in is making sure that the communities, as you are planning, will evolve in the direction of your plans and can work together, is maybe you ought to tell them a little bit about your plans. And so, that's what he did. And I think it was a great idea, great concept, and so, he did that. And I think that the presentation was well received. And subsequently then, we were invited by Administrator Mitten to make a presentation on our campus master plan. And in fact, I think at that meeting, we had car- you know, primarily everything's on the web these days, on the internet, but we passed out these cards to the people in the audience, and I have some here as well. But our actual plan that we have, that guides the university, is on the web with this- with- and I'll give you this information here. But at any rate, we are happy to be here. As you embark on your plan, we thought that we'd like to share a little information about how we came up with our plan. And then, Mayor, as you had mentioned, we look forward for the opportunity to work together in the future. So, let me turn it over to Ted.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Can you hear me here?
Yes.
Okay. All right, good. So, as mentioned, my name is Ted Christie. I'm Associate Director for Project Planning at the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign Campus. I work in the Capital Programs Division at Facilities and Services. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight and present the 2017 Urbana Camp- University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign Campus Master Plan update. This is a great opportunity for us, and we really appreciate being here. So, as was mentioned, I understand there's a chance that you're going to be going through a similar process for your planning efforts. And we would- I'd like to let you know that we'd love to work with you in any way we can as you go through that process. So, tonight I'm going to talk a little bit about the process that we followed on our master plan. You know, it wasn't perfect. There's always room for improvements, but we feel like we did a pretty good job. So, I'm going to get right into it. So, the presentation tonight is divided into three parts. First, we'll talk a little bit about the purpose of a master plan. Briefly then, we'll talk about some of the drivers that influenced the development of our plan. And then lastly, we'll get into some of the images and recommendations of our master plan. So first, the purpose of a master plan. A master plan is intended to provide a framework for campus development and a long-term guide for growth, taking into consideration patterns of land use, circulation, infrastructure, and open space while making wise use of limited land resources. It is not a mandate for building new buildings. It's intended to be a tool for- to allow administrators to make informed decisions. And one of the things that if any unit comes forward with a building that they want to build, and it isn't shown on the master plan, then there's a process that has to go through for them to do a site selection for their facility, and then that has to be approved by the board independently. And so, our campus has a long history of doing master planning. Our first master plan was done in 1905, and it just happened that this master plan coincided with the sesquicentennial celebration of the 150-year anniversary for our campus. So, we felt like the process that we went through was as open, transparent, and inclusive as we could possibly have made it. We conducted 43 stakeholder interviews, 79 committee meetings, eight student outreach sessions, and six public forums. There was a campus core committee that was formed. That committee, I was co-chair of the committee. The first thing that we had to do was to select a consultant to work with us that did all the development of the master plan. The- then we identified the various campus committees that you see here that fed into the master plan, that we wanted to make sure we met with all these folks, plus a variety of other stakeholders. Everything that was developed by the master planners went through the core planning committee and fed into the committees that you see here in the vertical stack of groups here. The Architectural Review Committee, the Chancellor's Design Advisory Committee, Chancellor's Capital Review Committee, and that fed through to the Chancellor, the President, and ultimately went to the board for approval. And then one of the first things that our team did was to develop an interactive website where folks could monitor the progress of our master plan, and also to offer any input that they might have along the way. So next, we're going to talk about some of the drivers that influenced the development of our master plan. As you can see here, the drivers can be summarized in by six key themes. First, reinforcing the campus core was the idea of improving the quality of the academic environment on our campus. Discovery and collaboration was a way of looking at improving the caliber, quantity, and connectivity of research programs, facilities, and land on our campus. Access and connectivity was looking at ways to overcome the physical distances on our campus. Student-centered campus was looking to improve the quality of student life programs. Neighborhood identity, improving the quality and physical organization of the campus environment. And then lastly, something called the ICAP goal and the concept of net-zero growth, which I'm going to talk a little bit more about here in the next slide. So, ICAP is the Illinois Climate Action Plan. The first Illinois Climate Action Plan was developed in 2010. There was an update to that document in 2015, and I think those documents were signed by the President, I believe, and various stakeholders on campus. And the one thing that the 2015 ICAP goal introduced was the concept of net-zero growth. And so, this was a new parameter that no other previous master plan for our campus had ever had to consider. It doesn't mean no new growth on our campus, but it does suggest that we look at new ways to approach our growth, and suggested ways to reduce the carbon footprint through these four overarching strategies that you see here. Reduce is reducing the supply by removing obsolete structures on our campus. Reducing demand by increasing utilization or increasing shared resources. Reuse is the renovation and rightsizing of our facilities for greater flexibility and utilization. Of course, recycling is the repurposing of facilities to create a better functional fit. And then lastly, renew is the idea of replacing obsolete structures with new state-of-the-art facilities. And so, in the end, how did we do? Well, the- looking at all the recommendations and of the master plan, it shows that we came within 1.5% of the no new square foot target over the next 10 years. The plan also- the team also evaluated the gain in energy and water efficiencies that were embedded in the master plan recommendations, and found that compared with existing, the new replacement facilities outperformed existing facilities in water and land use. The plan also suggested the addition of 50 acres of solar arrays, which now is a project that is getting ready to get started along Curtis Road between First Street and Neal Street. So next, we'll look at the- some of the images and recommendations of the master plan. Here, you're looking at the two primary views, the maps that are associated with our master plan. On the left, you have the overall view that shows the, in the light greenish color, all of the agr- primarily agricultural land that's south of Windsor Road. On the- on the right, you have the central campus view that shows the majority of our buildings on our campus. Just a little bit about the color coding on this plan. The facilities that are shown in the light, kind of the orange color, are those facilities that are slated for major renovations, while the blue colors indicate proposed new facilities or future development zones. This should be considered as more of an opportunities plan. We feel that this plan shows quite a bit more development than we are probably going to see in the next 10 or 20 years. So, keep that in mind. While the master plan does not call out specific building programs or building uses, it does make general land and building use recommendations for proposed building sites and development zones for academics, research, student affairs, residential, and athletic uses. And it includes recommend- recommended locations for future parking, replacement, and areas of potential mixed uses that could be part of a public-private partnerships. The organizing principles of the master plan, obviously, it builds off the evolution of the historic linear and axial relationships of the formal quadrangles flanked by academic buildings. The- obviously, the reinforcing the core is the idea that the main quad is always going to be there. This plan indicates reinforcing an east-west core along the military axis, which we'll talk about in a little bit. The principle of collaboration or collaborating, supporting research and creating opportunities for new centers and discovery and collaboration across our campus. And then lastly, connect as the notion of improving transportation linkages and support- to support collaboration across our campus. And so, next we'll look at how the plan addresses some of these organizing principles. This view is looking to the north in the primary portion of the central campus. As you can see, looking, you know, right up the main quad. Obviously, this, as I said, the quad is going to always remain, but the plan calls for this development of the military axis in the east-west direction, and shows that development continuing on into the Ikenberry Commons Housing Complex to the west. So, the master plan looked at methods of building enhanced networking and collaboration between colleges and institutes, including greater collaboration with the Carl Illinois- Carl Foundation Hospital in Urbana. This conceptual bubble diagram illustrates the linkages between multiple disciplines on our campus, and how those connections can be strengthened. The Design Center is thought to be a hub. The Design Center is a new facility that's being built at the current termination of the military axis along Fourth Street, thought to be a primary hub for collaboration going forward. And then the new Carl Illinois College of Medicine at the renovated Med Sciences Building is also part of the expanded Sciences Corridor, which is in the white box over here, that area. So, the previous master plans had neglected the cultural centers on our campus, and then indicated that the Sciences Corridor would be developed to the south of- south of the Roger Adams Lab. This master plan has changed that direction and is proposing the science- Expanded Sciences Corridor to the east of Burl Hall across Goodwin Avenue. The current Goodwin and Green Housing Complex at that location would be relocated to the north of Green Street along a revitalized Boneyard Creek Greenway. So, the master plan recommends for access and connectivity, a multimodal active transportation network. This plan is attempted to accommodate pedestrians, bicyclists, transit riders, and drivers, and incorporates previous bike and parking master plans, and proposes filling the gaps in the bike network. Surface parking would be replaced by garages in key locations. And the plan also introduces a concept for autonomous vehicles on our campus. So, one of the key problems that was identified early on was the great distances from one end to the other of our campus, and the amount of time it takes to walk or travel those distances. So, the master planners introduced this concept of autonomous shuttles. They thought- felt that it was a 21st century solution. That it suggests removing parking and traffic on Matthews Avenue and Peabody Drive, and proposes a new transit plan for connecting the north-south and east-west parts of our campus. Peabody Drive is a university street, and that probably would be a good test location for this kind of a concept. However, we realize that Matthew Avenue- Matthews Avenue is a city-public right-of-way, and eliminating the parking and the traffic on that street is probably going to be quite a challenge. And we know that would require considerable amount of cooper- collaboration with you folks. So, not quite as likely as perhaps experimenting along Peabody. But anyway, this is a concept of what that could look like. The bicycle lanes would be in the center portions of the streets, flanked by these driverless vehicles on either side, on the outside lanes of the street. And then you would have the vegetated buffer zones adjacent to that, and with your sidewalks located on the outside. There are- we have been told that there are other campuses in the United States that are experimenting with this, so it's already starting to happen. And you've probably heard more talk about autonomous vehicles as well. So, a brief look at how the master plan has addressed housing, dining, and student amenities. The plan suggests repurposing or replacement of the Turner Student Services Building, with possibly those facilities being moved to something like an addition at the Henry Administration Building. The plan calls for an expansion of the Illini Union. It calls for repurposing of the Kenny Gym to be a recreation facility on the north part of our campus. And then the next couple of slides are going to look at how the plan has addressed some additional student amenity options. So here, on the left, you see the- the plan recommends completion of the Ikenberry Commons Housing Complex with the four facilities that you see here. This also shows the extended green space of what we felt was an extension of the military axis further west into the Ikenberry Commons area. Also, you may notice here, the plan shows a recreational ice arena to be developed to the west of the current Activities and Rec Center. We'll see how that goes. There also, let's see, the- there are- the plan recommends new housing, expanded housing to the west of the Illinois Street Residence Halls with the new facility here. And then the Lincoln Avenue Residence Hall, they're recommending an addition to the housing complex in that area. So, let's see. So, as I mentioned previously, the replacement of the Goodwin and Green Apartments would be moved to a location north of Green Street, to an area along what they felt could be a revitalized Boneyard Creek Greenway. To the south, the master plan is proposing redevelopment of the Orchard Downs Housing Complex, with incorporating the real relocation of the Ashton Woods Housing Complex for a larger-developed family and graduate housing complex in that area. To the south of that, the plan shows future development zones in the area that's north and west of the Clark-Lindsey Complex. And we feel like this is an excellent opportunity for collaboration with the city of Urbana. So, as also as I previously mentioned, the plan shows the cultural centers to remain here along Nevada Street. The plan does show the existing buildings to be replaced with new facilities. It also shows a shared cultural center to the north of those cultural centers along Oregon Street. It indicates the removal of the stacks at the main library for the development of a new interdisciplinary collaborative research and learning space at that facility. It proposes the undergraduate library, renovation, and possible expansion of the undergraduate library with a single-story structure that could be built above the library. And they've provided us an image of a glass, kind of a cube-looking structure that could be built over that area. We know we don't want to shade the moral plots, so that's a consideration. It also shows the renovation of the Illini Union, and this would- thought would update the image and the offerings that that facility has to provide. So, let's see. Next, I'm going to talk about the Illinois Experience. Right now, the master planners felt that this was an opportunity that we could enhance the experience along Illinois Street. This route, as many of you probably know, is the route that new students are walked on this street when they're given their tour of campus. And it's often the first glimpse that they get of our campus when they come to Champaign-Urbana. The plan suggests creating a new gateway at the east end of Illinois Street along Lincoln Avenue. And currently, this is what that area looks like, looking at it towards the west from Lincoln Avenue. On the left, you have the Hellian Gateway green space, but on the right, you have a large surface parking lot, followed by the Illinois Street Residence Hall Complex, which is now under renovation. But then further down is another surface parking lot, and it is felt like this is a good opportunity for improvement here. So, the master planners provided an image of what this could look like. And as you can see, the new gateway at Illinois and Lincoln, flanked by a new gateway building on where that surface parking lot currently exists. The development of the walkway with a art park concept. So, you can see some of the artist's concept of art pieces that could be located along that walkway to improve that. And then, as you move down the street, you see the new housing- image of the new housing addition that would be part of the Illinois Street Residence Hall Complex. And then the Expanded Sciences Corridor along Goodwin, as you get further down the street. The master planners felt that there is a need for a redevelopment of a west campus identity. They suggested closing a portion of Fifth Street, which is just north of the Armory, and developing a west quad in this area where the current ice arena exists. They've indicated that there would be some parking garages over in this area that would replace the current C7 and C10 parking structures. And this is an image of what that might look like, looking from the north towards the Armory. The master planners felt this might provide a stronger sense of campus identity to this area. Okay. And so, meeting with the dean of the College of ACES, she shared her visions for a ACES Legacy Corridor, celebrating the grant- land-grant mission of the university. And the concept called for consolidating and celebrating the various ACES functions along Lincoln to Curtis Road and beyond. Relocating the crop sciences and the feed mill to this corridor would give the agricultural programs a more visible and accessible and a branded corridor. And- but as you know, Mayor Marlin, the chancellor has pledged to you to not locate the swine facility in the location that's shown here. So, we know that we would work with you if and when a project would ever come forward to relocate that facility. But anyway, visitor tours for this- this concept could begin at a new ACES or Arboretum Event Center and ACES Community Center that would be located in the Arboretum area. And a little bit about the athletics neighborhood. The Division of Interclegiate Athletics shared with us their vision for completing the Memorial Stadium renovation with a new redeveloped south end zone, the Horseshoe. They talked about the renovation of the east grandstands needs to be completed. They shared with us their vision for a new football performance center to the south of the current Irwin Football Complex. And as we all know, that's just been completed this fall, and as they've taken possession. The plan shows the renovation of the soccer fields with some new facilities along St. Mary's Road, and that is now under construction. And again, the plan also shows the oven basketball complex and renovation there, and there currently is a project being generated to start that. But one of the key things that this master plan did do was to bring together the leadership of the College of ACES, College of Vet Med, and the Division of Interclegiate Athletics to realize a future development zone in this area, south of St. Mary's. That's kind of a- an area that's currently used for animal research. The master plan identified 11 key gateways or entryways to our campus. The desire here was to unify the campus entries and reinforce branding at these locations. There were- the master plan developed landscape design guidelines, and identifies landscape guidelines for various landscape zones to unify and beautify the physical environment of our campus. And then, lastly, in summary, the master plan celebrates the impact the campus as a place has had over the past 150 years, and lays a foundation for continued impact, innovation, and contributions to the university's mission far into the future. We feel that there are opportunities embedded in this master plan for collaboration with you folks in the city of Urbana, and we look forward to any opportunity to work with you in the future. And so, I hope you've And so, I hope you've enjoyed this tour of the master plan. I did provide, I provided the mayor with cards that have this website, the University of Illinois Office of Capital Programs and Real Estate Services is where the documents are, are kept. So, all of this, this document represents the full master plan text. The maps are here, the maps are on the website. And so if you want to, you can take, take a look at it at your leisure. And so, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to give it our best shot to answer those questions.
We'll go to questions in just a second. I did get one more public input card, and this is from Rabel Burge. He doesn't wish to address members, but he wanted to indicate that he represents the Yankee Ridge Homeowners Association. And there's at least one other person in the audience waving his hand back there. And they're of course specifically concerned about the swine lagoon. So, your announcement is welcome news as well.
Okay.
Okay, any questions? Dennis?
Yeah, I attended a, a review of the master plan, I think when it was still a draft form about a year and a half ago or something at the campus. And several of the things that, that were presented, I thought were very visionary, wonderful. Your, your approach to making large corridors to the campus, connecting different parts of the campus makes a lot of sense. I was very interested also in your unmanned mobility pathways. And I was wondering how that would ultimately evolve. We're getting closer apparently into that technology anyway. And it would be a safe, perhaps a safe place to, to try that out on a campus, a street that doesn't have other kind of cross-traffic on it, so that's wise. One of my larger interests too was to find out that you were planning to do some more work along the Boneyard Creek, extending a section of it and planning and beautification from the Engineering Quad toward Lincoln Avenue. And so I just want you to know that one of the city council goals that we've adopted is to also try to connect your pathway along the creek to our downtown. And although we're not seeing right now any opportunity for funding a planning session at this time, as we approach our future planning document for comprehensive plan, you know, I'm certainly going to be wanting to see how we can make those connections, especially because Lincoln Avenue is a rather challenging corridor to connect to. But, but we do have public interest expressed in completing a plan that really hasn't been approached very seriously since 1978. So, it's long overdue. It's kind of like the missing half mile of the continuation of the creek into, from city center to city center. So, I really also was very interested in your, your proposal to try to make nodules of, of concentration for the different disciplines within your campus. And having spent 14 years as a designer at the U of I Press, doing books and design work out in the boon docks of, you know, along the railroad track, I was encouraged to think that perhaps some of the arts programs and departments would be collected together into a, a nodule of creative focus for the campus. So I think that there are opportunities to bring important aspects of the cultural life of your community that you maybe haven't considered significantly or specifically, to bring them onto the campus and to celebrate them in a more, more direct manner. Because obviously, the university press is a wonderful organization, nationally known, and has, has had such excellent directors and editors, collecting musicology resources, poetry, history, labor history. So I just want to remind you that don't overlook something as valuable as that while you're also planning to do perhaps a new orchestra hall, okay?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to collaboration. I think we've always felt that we've somehow not been quite involved at the table and we're really anxious to be partners with you.
Reach out to us when you start your planning and when you want to talk about the Boneyard Creek. We're pretty excited about that. We don't have funding for anything in that area either.
Right. That's the problem, isn't it? But still, without a vision, you don't have a goal.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Eric?
Does your planning envisage a further increase in the student population or, or not?
We, we did envision an increase in student population. Was it 1%? 1% a year is what we based it on?
Guess my second thought, I don't know if this would ever be something at this level, but it seems to me that the city, in a certain sense, can be a laboratory for people at the university who are interested in cities.
Yeah.
That, that, you know, you, you all have theoretical expertise, your relative departments have that. And, and we do tap into that from time to time, but it's always on a, it's always on a case-by-case basis. There isn't really
Right.
A, a more robust or formal, uh, uh, structure and a, and a more formal mission.
Right.
I, I, you know, as somebody who has, you know, been on both sides of this now, you know, serving on city council, but also being a, a faculty member since 1971, it just seems to me that the, it would be wonderful if there was actually a, an intentional university mission to say, yeah, we can serve this city, and at the same time, this city can be subject matter for really good research and for really good teaching. And, and I would love, I would, you know, I would, I would even spend some time thinking about that or working on that, but I would just love to see that happen.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I, I think our chancellor is, in, in this letter that I was handed, has said, states that he's committed to being good collaborative neighbors. And so I think we're looking forward to collaborating with you in any way we can. We're, we're constantly trying to get more engaged at, at Facilities and Services with research on our campus. And I don't see any reason why we couldn't look to expand that to the neighboring communities.
Maybe I'd love to see, for example, just to pull it out of the air, somebody on campus take on as a research project that could maybe be worth publishing, what is the impact on a city like this of legalizing cannabis?
Well.
It'll, it'll be complicated. It'll be worth some serious study and, and useful because there are many communities around
Yeah.
the country who are thinking about this, who are dealing with it.
Yeah, and, and, and look to us as leaders.
And look to us as leaders, yeah.
Mary Alice?
So, from what I could catch, you currently have under construction the athletic fields over by St. Mary's.
Yes.
In addition, you have some work going on at the Illinois Residence Hall.
Yes.
Are there other areas within Urbana that are currently under construction that you're trying to, I mean, I know the design center's in Champaign.
That's in Champaign.
Kansas is in Champaign.
Let's see, yeah, trying to think.
Is there a timeline on the Carl?
Well, the, the oven complex I mentioned is getting ready to start. That would be in Urbana, right?
Say which one, I'm sorry?
Oven basketball.
Oh, the basketball, it's more athletic fields, right?
More athletics, yeah. Offhand, I, I'm drawing a blank, but.
There's one under construction at Vet Med right now.
Yeah, I was wondering about the, the ACES stuff.
They're getting ready to do a fairly sizable renovation in addition at the Vet Med Complex. You're right.
Is there, is there anything in the next, like, couple of years that you know is in the pipeline? I'm looking at Matthew because.
So, yeah, there, there are a number of things that we've, we've proposed.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Number of things that we've proposed in the, in, for our planning purposes, is you've probably seen the, you know, capital appropriations bills that, that have identified different projects. Likewise with the Discovery Partners Institute, there were a number of projects that were proposed as well. You asked specifically about possibly with the medical corridor.
Right, right.
So along University Avenue, we had identified on the master plan a potential site for future development. We haven't really identified what that facility would be, but it certainly would be something to engage with the city as we start talking about developing that area, what implications that might have for other plans that the city might have then as well. So it's a, it's a good opportunity for, you know, comparing the plans and really seeing how we can find them to complement each other.
I mean, certainly connecting the Carl Hospital to the campus is going to go through Urbana there.
Right.
And if I, if I might add to that, I, I think one of the ways that, you know, we're trying to collaborate in, you know, ways that maybe there isn't drawing on a sheet of paper or a specific plan, but it's just the idea of informing the city and letting you know what the vision of the leadership is. So for example, when we talk about Carl College of Medicine, and, and we talk about the efforts to certify the Cancer Center and all the other health initiatives that are taking place, you know, chancellor gets pretty excited talking about healthcare and believing that at some point down the road, one of the things that this university will be known for is some of the innovation in healthcare and, and some of that work. And so, our Vice Chancellor for Research and Innovation, Susan Martinez, is actually heading up a lot of that. And so, we're in the process of trying to schedule a meeting with Mayor Marlin and Carol and others to just talk about that, where we'd like to go, where we think we're going to go, just so we can kind of, you know, be on the same team as we move forward. And, and ways that it's not on a sheet of paper yet, it's not being drawn, but here's where we think we'd like to head. Is this something the city of Urbana sees that could be beneficial to be part of that? So, those are the, that's the kind of thinking that, that we have going on right now.
And then the, the other small question that I have is, you talked about Illinois and, and the vision for that, the houses, the cultural houses on Nevada Street. And of course, we have the new Vet Center and the Christopher Center over on north side of, of Nevada. But you didn't talk anything about the south side of Nevada, and there's some interesting older buildings that are in use there. So they've got the Dance Studio, and you've got CDL. Are there plans for that area?
Well, I mean, the, the, we, we're looking to replace those facilities with new, more modern facilities, but not changing the use, you know, keeping the use.
Right, yeah, so, no, I'm not talking about the cultural centers. I'm talking about like the Dance Studio and CDL, and those are kind of old-fashioned buildings, I'm going to call them. And then of course, over on the corner of Oregon and Nevada, there's a repurposed church that became a, became a IT place and a computer place. Are there plans for that specific little corridor?
So, there aren't, aren't specific plan, as, on the master plan, there aren't specific plans, but there certainly are, there have been conversations with Fine and Applied Arts, for example, to talk about the Dance Studio. They know that they have a future need that, as it exists, that isn't, isn't really meeting their needs as they go into the future. So, there's no, no actual project that has been brought forward, but there certainly are discussions about thinking about that. So, yes, there would be thought going into, to developing those because they are becoming somewhat antiquated, just as Ted had presented earlier, looking at, you know, either, is it a, is it a reuse, a repurpose, or is it time to, you know, exchange something?
Well, you're clustering, right? You're clustering different things. And so I'm, I'm just trying to envision what would be clustered in that corridor, because as I said, you have the, the Vet Center and you have the CDL. I mean, there's, there's, I mean, you know, FAA and so forth, it's a little bit of a hodgepodge.
Right, right.
So is there anything in the master plan that, you know, that's, that's a specific concentration of something or in that, in that area?
It's more of a cultural neighborhood.
Yeah, but that, that's a
That's closer to the quad.
That's closer to the quad.
Yeah.
I, I, the answer is no, that I can, I can
Okay.
think of right now.
All right.
But it certainly is, as I said, you know, as, as those facilities need to be removed and we have to accommodate, one, what is the, the intent of the college that uses those spaces? And then really think carefully about what we do there. And again, another opportunity for collaboration.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any other, Bill?
Yeah, I'm especially interested in the plans for Orchard Downs because that's my ward. So, is there a timeline for moving the, the housing, reconstructing the housing and moving the people and improving the housing there?
Not, not, there's no funding at this time, I'm sorry, no funding at this time. So, I mean, it's not an identified project, it's just, it's, it's just a plan. It's just something that we'd like to do. I don't know if there's any urgency, you know, there may be some urgency to relocating the, the Ashton Woods Apartments, so we'll have to see. But right now, there's nothing in the plans.
Okay, and then the other one I was wondering about a timeline for is the Gateway Center at Illinois and, and Lincoln. If that's going to be a public-private partnership, it might be advantageous to take advantage of the Opportunity Zone as long as that is in place, which I think is another six or eight years. So, is there a timeline for that?
There's, there, again, nothing immediately in the plans for that.
Okay.
Great concept.
To your point, it was a recognition that that is a, you know, primary spot, is, as a, as an entrance onto the campus from that side, but there, there has been no project identified specifically for that.
Okay, and I do like the design, the conceptual design for Illinois Street, that looks really nice.
Thank you.
Dennis?
I appreciate Bill's question about Orchard Downs. I know that probably about 12 years ago, maybe now, there was a concept floated which didn't get worked on any further, but I have often thought that, you know, we might be wanting to talk to the university in the future about it again. So naturally, we'd like to be involved in that conversation.
Great.
And then, the other thing is, one of the ways that it'd be kind of nice to interact and to recognize the fact that Urbana actually has three global partnerships. We have a Sister Cities Program, and we work through Sister Cities International out of Washington DC, and also the Illinois Sister Cities Association, which is a statewide organization that fosters sister city partnerships, which are global partnerships with different communities, you know, in other, other nations around the world. And, which is recognized at the Illinois Municipal League Banquet every year. There's a program that allows the Sister City Program in Illinois to make awards. So we have three sister cities here in Urbana. One is in China, in Guan, near Guangzhou City, in Haizhou District. One is in Tiongville, France, and one is in Zomba, Malawi, in Africa. And we have partnered with the African Studies Department. We have received a, a grant from the Vice Chancellor for Outreach in the Community, doing a project in the public schools, teaching the schoolchildren about life in Malawi. And currently, we're about to receive visitors from Malawi who are working with the Political Science Department on a DIFID grant, which is doing environmental trash collection and taxation studies in our sister city there. So, I just want you to know that we have a really interesting opportunity to interact, maybe more, maybe more thoroughly with the university and its programs, because we have a community that has actually had been award-winning Sister Cities program here in Illinois. Just to let you know that.
Any other questions?
I did, I will take this opportunity to note that we're happy that for the first time, the cities of Urbana and Champaign will have a representative on the chancellor's Economic Development Advisory Committee. And there's a meeting coming up soon, so Carol Mitten will be representing the city of Urbana, and Bruce Knight, I believe, will be representing the city of Champaign on that committee. So that, that is a real step forward in terms of communication with the cities and kind of giving us heads up on what's in the works from the campus perspective. And it works both ways, and, and you'll be able to get insight into where the city's going as well. So we're very happy that the chancellor decided to add representatives from the communities. That's, that's a real breakthrough. And then I had a question. On one of your slides, you had probably 11 or 12 different gateway intersections. Is there any one spot in the community that you consider the, one of the major gateways to campus, especially on the Urbana side, this can play into as we start our comprehensive plan? We're rebuilding Green Street as part of the MCOR project. So what do you, as the campus, consider the gateway?
Well, I guess, I guess for me, I always consider, you know, the alma mater is kind of one of our key gateways, that area. But I don't know, I feel like they're all important and we just need to be consistent with our branding. You know, it seems like we've done different things at each location, we just need to kind of unify that. And so I think we're going to be looking at probably, what are the, trying to come up with a, I don't know, a plan for which ones need to be attacked and which ones need to be improved. It's hard to say, I guess, I mean, probably University Avenue and Matthews Avenue is a key one there. That's number two on the map on the north end there. Obviously, I think the Illinois Avenue one is a key one, so.
If you're looking at the admissions office and Alumni Center and Halyne Gateway.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For coming.
Okay, we'll move on to reports of standing committees. Councilmember Eric Jacobson.
Aha. Okay, let me get right back to this agenda that I let my mind wander from because of this wonderful planning.
Oh, thank you, okay. So, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I move...
Oh, thank you, okay. On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I will move first Resolution Number 2020-01-007R with a recommendation for approval. Would you like the title? Okay. And this is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding to upgrade the area-wide Record Management System, ARMS, compliance with National Incident-Based Reporting Systems specifications.
I'll second that.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes.
On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I move Resolution Number 2020-01-008R, a resolution authorizing protest slash request for hearing slash intervention in property tax exemption proceedings relevant to the OSF Healthcare System 2019-Pay 2020 to the council with a recommendation for approval.
Well, I'll second.
It's already been moved with a recommendation, so it's just actually for approval.
Okay.
Just for approval. And it was seconded by Dennis.
Okay.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Very much so.
And Wu?
Yes.
On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I move Resolution Number 2020-01-009R, a resolution authorizing protest slash request for hearing slash intervention in property tax exemption proceedings relevant to the Carl Foundation 2019-Pay 2020.
I'll second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Bill. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I move Resolution Number 2020-01-010R, a resolution regarding the release of certain closed session meeting minutes and approving the destruction of certain verbatim records of closed session meetings for the period ending January 31st, 2020.
I'll second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Sharice. It sounded way more dramatic than it actually sounded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Jacobson, yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Councilmember Jacobson. Reports of special committees. Reports of officers.
Do you want to remind council and announce to the public that next week, we will begin the discussion of the liquor code revision? That's Chapter Three in our city code. You'll be getting a complete draft with your packet this week, along with a summary and a memo, so. And there will be a presentation next week as well. Any other reports? New business. These are both related to a variance for the plasma facility. Lilly Welcock, city planner.
It's a night of planning. Thank you, everybody. This is for the Stow Group's plasma facility, the special use permit that was heard on December 2nd, for a freestanding commercial sign. The Stow Real Estate Holdings LLC requests a major variance to construct a freestanding commercial sign for their new plasma collection facility at 907 North Lincoln Avenue. As a reminder, freestanding signs are allowed in the R5 medium-high multiple-family residential zoning district for institutional and residential uses. Stow requests a sign to help people find their building. Stow has recently granted their special use permit by city council on December 2nd, 2019, to allow a plasma collection facility in the R5 medium-high multiple-family residential zoning district. Stow Real Estate Holding LLC is a developer of plasma collection facilities. The intended facility is meant to be developed for a company called KED Plasma USA. The site is approximately 2.6 acres. It's located on the west side of Lincoln Avenue between Fairlon Avenue and King Park. It is zoned R5, as you can see, and its adjacent properties are zoned R2 and CRE for King Park. Its past use was a senior care facility. The former facility had a freestanding sign facing Lincoln Avenue. In 2012, the facility was closed and was reportedly sold to be renovated as a care facility. The facility never reopened, and in 2017, was bought by the current owner with the intention of demolishing the vacant senior care facility and selling the site to a developer. Freestanding signs are not allowed in the R5 zoning district, except for institutional and residential uses. Since some business-in-office uses are allowed in the R5 district with special and conditional use permits, it appears to be an oversight of zoning ordinance to not allow the signs for those uses. The table below, I have, it's kind of hard to... Table right here will show you what is allowed in R5 zoning district, and you can see not allowed are most commercial signs. What is allowed are signs that are intended for residential use. If this request is denied, no signs will be allowed at the new business. At this time, I want to talk a little bit about a dedication of right-of-way for the existing sidewalk. The site plan shows that there's a sidewalk on the property. The new plasma center may bring more foot traffic along the stretch, and the city will need access to the sidewalk for repair and maintenance work. Without dedicating right-of-way for the sidewalk, the city would have to negotiate temporary easements with the property owner to perform maintenance on the sidewalk, which will take additional staff time and slow the process of regular maintenance. Staff in the Zoning Board of Appeals recommends a condition that the applicant dedicate right-of-way to the city for the existing sidewalk. Additionally, staff has prepared an ordinance for tonight, an ordinance accepting the dedication of right-of-way at 907 Lincoln Avenue. The city council must approve the major variance with the condition to dedicate right-of-way in order to hold the petitioner to carrying out this dedication. Staff will work with the current owner and the petitioner to ensure that the agreement is executed. I'm going to read the case summary, as the case summary summarizes the variance criteria. One, the property is zoned R5 medium-high multiple-family residential. Two, Stow Real Estate Holdings LLC requests a major variance to allow a freestanding commercial sign in the R5 medium-high multiple-family residential zoning district. Three, city council approved a special use permit on December 2nd, 2019 with the following conditions: provide a landscape plan with any building permit, build in general conformance to the proposed site plan, and provide a MTD bus shelter along Lincoln Avenue if MTD determines a location to be appropriate for a bus shelter. Four, the variance does not serve as special privilege to the property owner as some non-residential and non-institutional uses are allowed in the R5 zone, but signs for those non-residential and non-institutional uses are not allowed. Five, the property owner did not deliberately create this situation as zoning ordinance allows non-residential and non-institutional uses, but does not allow signs for those non-residential and non-institutional uses. Six, the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood as the proposed use is located near two medical campuses and commercial, institutional, and residential properties, all with freestanding signs. Seven, the variance will not create a nuisance as it will be difficult to see the sign from adjacent properties, and the sign will conform to light-level limitations specified in the zoning ordinance. Eight, the variance represents the minimum deviation necessary from the zoning ordinance as the variance would simply allow a freestanding, non-institutional sign in a district that allows freestanding signs for, but only for institutional uses. City council has the following options regarding an ordinance approving a major variance. One, approve the ordinance, or two, approve the ordinance with certain terms and conditions, or three, deny the ordinance. City council has the following options regarding an ordinance accepting dedication of right-of-way. One, approve the ordinance, two, approve the ordinance with certain terms and conditions, or three, deny the ordinance. At its January 15th, 2020, meeting, Zoning Board of Appeals voted unanimously to recommend approval of major variance to the city council with the following conditions. One, that the owner dedicates right-of-way as illustrated in Exhibit G. Two, that the sign generally conforms to the site plan in Exhibit F, and that is set back at least eight feet from the property line. This is a concept for the sign. If approved with the following condition that was just read, the sign would have to conform to this site plan.
Are there technical questions for Lilly? Dennis?
Yeah.
Oh, and I would remind you that Representative from Stow is here as well, if you have questions for them.
Yeah, if it comes to that, maybe he'll step forward, I don't know. So I think, first of all, that I appreciate the design of the sign that's being proposed. It's a pedestal sign, or whatever you call it, similar to that. So it's not high in the air, it's moderately sized. And I appreciate the brickwork, which I think makes it look more substantial, as far as quality goes. I'd like to know if it's going to be, is it self-illuminated from the interior or is it going to be illuminated by a spotlight on the exterior, do you know?
The sign in here, and what you would be tying to this site plan, is internally illuminated, but... So it's aluminum construction, the lettering and the digital fade, those are acrylics, so the light comes through the acrylic lettering and the digital fade.
So the whole face is not an illuminated one, it's just the lettering will be illuminated, right? Okay, so that seems very appropriate for the non-glare sort of aspect of a sign that's in a residential area, or could be. It's not exactly facing residential areas, it's facing a busy street, but, okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Other questions? Mary Alice?
So this used to be a senior care facility, which had a freestanding sign on Lincoln Avenue. It looks like the former facility closed in 2011, so it's passed... I'm assuming because they were there for such a long time, they never needed their own major variance. Is that correct?
Yes, there was no, I could not find any sign permit. It could have been that that was part of them coming into the city. That's when, about the time that the facility opened. So, yeah, it could have been something where it was just a non-conforming, non... You know, it was a sign that was just kind of grandfathered in.
So if they did have a major variance, would this petitioner need to file for major variance? Or does it carry over with the property?
It would have to, if the major variance had a condition to it that said that it generally conformed to a sign plan or something like that, then that major variance would not apply to a new sign.
All right, thank you.
Say if it had like a greater dimensions or different...
Right, thank you, I'll just add to that. So if the company name changes, for instance, the variance would still apply because it would be the same size, same design, but it would say something different.
So if they changed, if they have the sign on there and then they just change the name on the sign, it would be legal?
Or if they changed the aluminum to a similar material or the brick to a... You know, that kind of thing, so.
Yeah, 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 okay, thank you.
Any other technical questions? Is there a motion? Oh, Bill?
So the future land use was community business, and it looks like the zoning for the property to the south of that is B2, would this kind of sign be allowed in a B2 zoning?
I'd have to double-check. I think it would be allowed in, but for maybe slightly different size limitations than, say, B3.
Not memorized, but yes, I do bring my book. So for freestanding signs in B2, maximum area of a sign is 32 feet unless it's on a corner, then it gets complicated, you can do a little more. Maximum height at this distance of eight feet from the property line would be six feet tall in B2.
Conforms to that.
So it looks pretty similar to me, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Jared?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, if there are no other questions, feel free.
Okay, I'll move ordinance number 2020-01-001, an ordinance approving a major variance for a plasma facility sign at 907 North Lincoln Avenue with the condition that the sign generally conform to the site plan given to us in Exhibit F, and so the setback is at least eight feet from the property line, and be approved.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Sharice, and those conditions are included in Section 1 of the ordinance.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I do have one question, Lilly. Because you said that the lighting won't be, will not be higher than what the lighting is already. So my question, what is the lumens or whatever that are allowed going down Lincoln Avenue? Because there are houses right across the street from this place.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, I do wonder, I do wonder if, and the lighting on Lincoln Avenue is not real bright, but, so it's not going to be any brighter than, at that height, you know, than what's coming from the street lamps?
Yeah, so in general, so commercial property uses... Yeah, so in general, so commercial, commercial property uses have commercial lighting restrictions in our zoning ordinance, and we measure it by foot candles, which is how much you can really see from a certain distance away, and how much that is different than, than what's already there, like the current lighting situation. What is not, our street lights are not something that's a part of that. In general, our street lamps are actually much, much brighter than what we allow for commercial properties. So, in this particular case, with the right-of-way being over 60 feet difference for, for the residential properties across the street, I think it was kind of, kind of mentioned maybe in the staff report, maybe, but that far distance with the street light, there's very, it would be very unlikely to see much of a difference between, if you're standing in the living room of one of the homes on the other side of Lincoln Avenue, in foot candles out of the window.
Mm-hmm, okay. Thanks. Eric?
Well, also, the sign is point, the, the flat part of the sign is along the street, so it doesn't face across, across the street.
It's perpendicular to the street.
Perpendicular to the street.
Any other comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes. That motion passes. Next up is ordinance number 2020-01-002, which is an ordinance accepting the dedication of right-of-way at 907 North Lincoln Avenue. Jared?
I'll offer a motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Dennis.
For, for the record, that's a motion to approve ordinance number 2020-01-002.
Apologies for assuming that.
Thank you for your specifications.
Is there any further discussion?
I'll just say
Dennis?
That I think it's very appropriate and respectful of the, of the business to dedicate this right-of-way, and it makes it easier for the city, and we will enjoy that partnership. Thank you.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes. That motion passes. And with no further business before the council, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.